It is six thirty and we will begin this committee of the whole for the township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. And the motion comes forward from councillor Maybe, seconded by deputy mayor Fody, that the agenda be adopted as circulated. Any questions or comments before we adopt the agenda? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? It's carried. Next item is in ca- or sorry, declaration of pecuniary interest in general nature thereof. Does anybody have an interest to declare at this time? I have no hands up. So we'll move on to in camera. There is no in camera session this evening. And then to number five, which is delegations and presentations. So we have RNJ Youth Services Programs and Services. So please come to the podium. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, thanks for giving us a little bit of your time tonight. My name is Roberta Abbott. I am a psychotherapist in private practice in Gannon Aqui. And this is Jen McAllister. She's the principal of Linklater School in Gann. And we are board members of RNJ. Unfortunately, Rachel Burns, who's our executive director, couldn't be here tonight. She had a memorial service she had to go to. So you don't get Rachel's expertise, unfortunately. She's the really knowledgeable one, but you get two new and enthusiastic board members to, uh, to tell you about RNJ. So just to start, does anyone have any knowledge or familiarity with RNJ to begin with? Little bit, which is not unusual. I certainly didn't before I was asked to join the board. Um, the RNJ is Reverend Norman Johnson Youth Services. Um, and a lot of people have no idea what that is. But he was the person who founded it back in nineteen eighty-seven. And what RNJ does is it is a, a youth services, um, organization. It's a charitable organization. It's funded primarily by the Ministry of Child Services, Ministry of Children and Youth Services, the Ministry of the Attorney General, and through community donations and some foundations. And it's a kind of a full-service, full-spectrum organization that tries to help kids at, from a preventative perspective, to keep them engaged and active and keep them out of trouble. Up to and including interventions if kids do end up in trouble with the law, to help them with court services, with sometimes with restorative justice programs, um, with, um, a court mental health worker and a variety of services that help them if they should need that sort of thing. Um, since nineteen eighty-seven, it has, I noticed we don't have the presentation up for you, do we?
Okay, we'll get that up on the screen. Our apologies. Sorry, it was part of our package that went out, so we're just trying to pull it up from the website.
Yeah, no worries. Maybe I'll just kind of continue babbling a little while we're waiting for that. Um, RNJ has offices in Brockville and Smiths Falls, but, uh, workers go all across, um, the region to meet kids in their communities and work with schools. And they have education programs in schools, which Jen could probably tell you a little bit more about, because that's her area of expertise.
Uh, they just have a number of proactive, uh, youth engaging, um, workshop sessions, um, talking about healthy living, good choices, anti-bullying, um, appropriate cyber usage, um, a number of, um, proactive workshops and sessions for our youth. And they go to most of our schools in Lanark Leeds and Grenville.
I think right now we're a little bit space-challenged in Smith Falls, that I think there was, uh, we were losing our office there, I believe. So we're looking for space there, but they have space in Brockville. And there's a number of really passionate, enthusiastic, um, highly-trained, uh, youth workers that work with the kids. There are after-school programs. One of the ones that you may have heard of, and a lot of kids from TLTI may have participated in, is the Bermout Program down in Gann, um, at Joel Stone Park. It, uh, was, I think it's been running two summers now, and it's been very successful. And, um, you know, it gives the kids something to do and a place to be after school. There's also the Stingers Program in Brockville that is once a week after school, that tons of kids come to from all over the area to have someplace to go and something to do. It's, it kind of helps just to keep them engaged and, you know, and give them some good adult role models around in the evening to talk to the, the youth workers that are there to engage them.
Some technical difficulty with our two laptops. Please, we apologize.
No, it's no problem.
But everybody on council, it was part of their package. So if you want to continue, they would have seen it.
Well, you may have noticed, I mean, there was a slide that gave statistics in the region. And sadly, I mean, the numbers are going up. I mean, with most, so many things where there are interventions and, you know, work in the community to try to deal with social situations and help people who are in situations of need. The need keeps going up and often the numbers of volunteers go down. And it's difficult to find the funding to continue to pay people. So, yeah. So if you want to carry on a couple more slides, one more. There, that gives you, these are the numbers, um, of youth served between twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three. And I believe TLTI in there is at seventy-seven. But as Jen was mentioning earlier, um, a lot of those, a lot of kids from this area also go to school in Gann. And so, you know, if you kind of blend the numbers, you're looking at, you know, the, actually went up to one fourteen then last year. Yeah. So on that slide, it shows seventy-seven to twenty twenty-three, but then twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four for TLTI, it's gone up to a hundred and fourteen. And a lot of the increase is, is internet issues. It's sexual exploitation, it's bullying. It's, it's a lot of things where it's, um, like sharing inappropriate photographs and, and a lot of that sort of thing. That there's a lot of education happening around that in schools now. And RNJ workers are engaged in, in helping with a lot of that. Want to go to the next one? Oh, this might be the old presentation that you have. Um, okay. Yeah, maybe just head to the next one. Um, this just, what this is, is this is a list, the next few slides are a list of some of the programs that RNJ engages in. Um, you know, youth counseling and extrajudicial measure, measures to be able to engage with kids who they might have been, um, have, have had involvement with the police. And workers will help them to navigate that, to be able to get them to appointments sometimes. Because, you know, that's not always possible to help the parents to understand what's happening and to hopefully stop the procedure before that, you know, things get too far for the kids. Um, one of the things that I recently had some training in with them that was really interesting was the Restorative Justice Committee. So sometimes if it's appropriate, kids will engage in a restorative justice program where they meet the person who they have wronged in some way, whether it's another kid or adults or community organization. And they sit across from them and have a conversation about it and make amends and find some way to, you know, to come to some understanding with the person who has been wronged about what they need out of the process, which is incredible. I mean, everybody learns so much out of it and it's really enriching and valuable for everybody involved. Uh, next. There's a youth mental health court worker, um, that helps to support them through the process. Uh, Connections is the in-school program, is it not? Where they, yeah, they go around to the schools in the region and teach kids about, you know, the various things that they need to understand to hopefully keep them out of trouble and give them more social skills. Next. School, the after-school program, Stingers, I was mentioning earlier, hugely popular, happens in Brockville. Kids come from all over the region to, there's all kinds of sports and things get chaos and crazy and they have a great time. And, yeah. Next. Uh, Bermout, we talked about, I guess, oh, it's been three years. So really successful and going to happen again this year. So the trends, as I was mentioning, increased caseload, increased complexity. Um, I mean, some of the things that kids are facing now, I mean, we hear this all the time, right? That, you know, the kind of stuff that kids face now compared to the stuff that we went through is kind of curls your hair. But, um, there are sadly fewer volunteers, um, increased wait lists and lack of services. But it's amazing when you talk to the workers who work for RNJ, just the passion and dedication that they bring to their jobs and how much they care about the kids and the stuff they do is really inspiring. Um, this, again, this shows the increase in the individuals served over the span of years and just how it's been going up and up and up. I think, you know, not only though is it, um, partly that there are more kids that need help, but it's also the more that you recognize need and the more that you recognize the good things that can be done from a prevention and intervention perspective, the more that you broaden out that possibility to people and you hear from people more and they get engaged more. And so maybe it's, you know, it's a bit chicken and egg, but there certainly are more kids who need help. Uh, so this gives you a little bit of an idea of the finances that, yeah, there's, um, not nearly enough money to do the stuff that we do. So funding sources, as mentioned, um, the Ministry of Children and Community Services, Ministry of Attorney General, uh, Addictions and Mental Health, all, you know, good donors and funders. And we do all kinds, we just had it trivia night the other night for fundraising and we walked on the coldest night of the year. And, you know, we're always trying to find funding sources. This, I thought, was a really interesting slide. This is a new slide that Rachel has put in. And it gives a sense of how much less money it costs to intervene and divert kids out of trouble than it does to actually help them once they end up in court. Which, you know, it's one of those things that you probably expect anyway, but to see it in black and white and in numbers, I think is really important. Um, yeah, I mean, intervention and prevention, you know, prevention's worth a pound of cure kind of thing. It's always way better to help kids before they get into trouble than try and dig them out of it. So how can you help? Um, unlike, you know, a lot of people who come, we're not sort of, you know, necessarily just asking for money. I mean, money's always wonderful, but mostly what we want is like, when I asked the first question, have you ever heard of RNJ? The point of us coming around to the municipalities is to let people know about it, that the work that's being done and for you to become advocates, to let other people know about it, to when you hear about, you know, youth programs that might be something that could dovetail with the work that we do and engage in. If you know of people who might be good volunteers, we always need tons of volunteers. Um, I understand that tonight you're talking about the rec center. I mean, if you're thinking about, you know, there's, the more venues and avenues and ways we have to engage kids, the better, right? So that's kind of our major message with this presentation is to just generate some more knowledge and engagement and try and get more people interested in and helping out with RNJ and the work that we do. Did you want to add anything? Any questions, comments?
Any questions from council members? Go ahead, deputy mayor Fody.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, you had mentioned a few times about the workers. Is there anybody on staff here actually on a salary? Or is everybody a volunteer position?
No, there, yeah, there are salaried staff, our executive director and our youth workers, most of them are on salary. The volunteers, um, are more engaged in, say, like the after-school programs and things like that. Um, but because the kind of work that they do is extremely specialized work that they require university degrees to do. It's not, yeah, I mean, they're, they're dealing with incredibly complex and challenging personal problems that these kids have and in being able to get them through some really trying times in their lives and that of their families. So, yeah, they're, they're salaried.
Follow-up, if I may, excuse me, of that number that you put up there, the financial number, how much of that would involve, uh, salary?
I, I don't know that off the top of my head. I'd have to get back to you.
All per fifty percent? Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
We'll let you know. We'll, we'll get that information for you.
Thank you. Go ahead, councillor Calmum.
Thank you, your worship. Hello, Jen. Jen was, Jen was our VP at Sweets Corners quite a long time ago, but it's very nice to see you. Um, I just wondered, the kids in your programs, how do, how do, are they referred to you or does it depend on the program? Are some, any kid could join or is some of it referral? And if so, who would refer the kid to the pro, the child to the program?
I believe a lot of the referral comes through, I mean, it comes through the police, it comes through, um, schools and, and self-referral for sure. Yeah, um, for a lot of the programs. There are a lot of things that, like, if you go on the RNJ website, there are a lot of educational programs and family programs and things that kids can, you know, that families can get involved in and that kids can go to, like the after-school programs. They can just go, um, and then other things, referrals come through, you know, official channels to, yeah, through schools and law enforcement. Yeah. Is there anything?
Any other questions? Go ahead, councillor Jameson.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I know you, you, uh, didn't spend a lot of time on the money, but I look at this deficit. I just wonder if, if there's a, the organization has a plan in place to try to address that? Is it, I mean, it's talking about a deficit, I'm assuming it's accumulated. Um, so is there a plan in place to try to address that?
Um, well, I believe that, um, the problem is that when you have a deficit, I mean, RNJ does have quite a few programs. And tragically, if the deficit is not something that we can meet, then programs have to be, you know, eliminated or shelved for the time being. Um, you know, maybe the workers aren't able to go out as frequently to places or things. But I know that, uh, Rachel and our board chair have been lobbying the provincial government, talking to, um, our MPP and various others to try to bridge that gap. I think at this point, it hasn't resulted in loss of programming or loss of staff. But I think, you know, that is something that is likely, if, if they can't, yeah, if we can't find the money.
Right, okay. It's not the solution anybody wants to see.
No.
Um, so a couple more questions. Um, in terms of the discussion of approaching new sources of money, of course, uh, yeah, well, I won't comment on that because approaching the province on anything is very difficult. Um, have you approached us for a community grant?
We have not yet. Uh, this, the engaging the municipalities was something we kind of just came up with last fall. And, I mean, Rachel is, you know, is busy running the organization, so she's been coming out to as many as possible. But trying to time it in terms of coming to your budget meetings and doing that sort of thing was a little tricky, which is why you're, you know, getting, you know, board members were trying to fan out across the region and, and talk. But we haven't done that yet. No, we certainly could.
When, uh, your worship, when's our next input?
September. So I believe the, the track, it opens up for applications in August to be awarded in September, I believe.
I, I, I raise it, uh, your worship's in, in the hopes that you'll come back to us. And a couple of other organizations I can think of might, might be there too. It's, it's, you know, people approach us to do, uh, things for hundreds of thousands of dollars. And one just wants to decide whether it's relevant or not. But watching, having the opportunity in, in another environment to see some of the challenges out there, this is a valuable thing in our community. So I thank you for that.
And I, I have councillor Gerrell with some questions.
Uh, thank you. And through you, your worship councillor, uh, Jameson touched on it. And I was going to ask if there were specific programs in our township or township in Gann, say, that we could use community grants, but that was already covered because that is a very easy channel for this council to deal with. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Councillor Maybe, go ahead.
Thank you, madam mayor. And through you, again, uh, the youth are very important to have such a valuable program. So it is good to see that there is one going. Uh, it's unfortunate that there is a little bit of a deficit. But, uh, with vested interests like you're doing today here, as well as the rest of the councils and other municipalities, and as you said, even our provincial, uh, I'm sure that you'll be able to get there and get that done. But certainly the youth and, uh, the connections that you're making with them and the, and as you were saying, uh, you, they get referrals to your group also. So it's very vital that you have all the support mechanisms around the community, helping you out to, to help our youth, our future councillors perhaps, actually, uh, participate and be, uh, and get the needed social help that they need. Um, again, we all fall back on homelessness and we see that and how that happens. And some of our homelessness are youth, unfortunately. So again, helping them at this point is very vital to helping them in the future become the citizens of our community.
Mm-hmm. Well, and you, no, I mean, you've been aged in, you know, all kinds of youth programming and projects yourself.
Yes, yes, I have. Very, very many. Yes. Thank you.
Uh, one of the things that I would like to see and that we have talked about with, um, Gantown Council is looking at trying to find sort of year-round after-school programming. I mean, the Bermout project in the summer is wonderful, but, you know, we're looking for, you know, maybe facilities and money and programming and stuff to try to, because that, as you saw from that slide about prevention versus the cost of actual court intervention, you know, that's a really important piece, because not only do the kids come out and just have fun, but they, you know, there are youth workers there who they can talk to about if there's something they need somebody to talk to, who they can trust. And, you know, they get that time with other adults to be able to, you know, maybe deal with some things and ask some questions. And, yeah, so hopefully that's something we can do in the future.
Any further questions? Go ahead, follow-up deputy mayor Fody.
Thank you, your worship. Um, the age categories, is there a more vulnerable age than others, like pre-teen, early teen, late teen? Do they break down that they're balanced throughout or is there a more critical zone?
I would say in the last few years, it, the age of vulnerability has gotten lower and lower. Um, our vulnerable youth used to be probably, um, high school age. It's now dipping into grade five and grade six at school, which is probably eleven and twelve and thirteen-year-olds.
So just to follow up on that question, my question was going to be, what age do, uh, do you target for your programs? Like, do they start in grade three, where you're talking about cybersecurity and that sort of thing? Or does it start at grade six? Just trying to get some context of the age group that you're targeting.
The staff that are traveling to the schools will, um, talk to any grade that the school is interested in. And yes, I would say they go, they start from kindergarten right through to the high school years. There's traditionally been more of a focus on the high school years, but now we're seeing the, the need to dip into the younger grades. Kids are having cell phones in sometimes grade one, grade two, um, and they're already engaged in possibly unethical behavior online. So the younger we can get them, the better. What we're seeing is with, um, the possibility of losing some programs, typically the programs that involve with the legal system, those are going to be the programs that stay where the preventative and the intervention programs, which is the case in any sector, um, those are the programs we're going to lose. So it just puts, um, more stress on the financials, um, if we can't get to the proactive. But those will actually in, in essentially be the programs that we lose without the funding.
So, um, my, I'm going to ask a couple of questions just to pin a bow on this and then we'll, we'll move along. Um, the deficit slide showed twenty-three, twenty-four, so I'm assuming that's an amalgamated, is your, does your year-end straddle two years? Or is it just one year? Just one year? Okay. So, um, as far as the point that was made, excuse me, uh, in regards to our grant program, yes, we have another intake in the fall. However, we have a larger intake, uh, more dollars available in the spring. So, and there's no limit to how many times you apply for that grant funding. Um, and so I would encourage, as the other members of council have done, to put forward that, um, those reasoning for those preventative, um, programs, because those are obviously the ones that are vulnerable based on budget. Um, and might be money well-spent for the OLG money that we use to fund that. Okay. Well, we thank you for the presentation and, uh, we look forward to hearing more about the success of those programs in our community and, uh, look forward to seeing any applications that might come forward.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. So we'll move forward with staff report, six point one zoning bylaw amendment application two four one four Outlet Road. And the motion comes forward from councillor Maybe, seconded by deputy mayor Fody. The committee of the whole recommends that council approve the bylaw as attached to planning and development twenty twenty-four dash zero three eight as exhibit A to rezone the property at twenty-four fourteen Outlet Road to a site specific, specific AG twelve agricultural zone to prohibit a dwelling from being constructed on the property. Discussion on the motion, as this was our planning meeting that was held prior to committee of the whole. Any discussion on this matter? We only have one guest online. And if you, I guess I should, should indicate that this is committee of the whole. We do take questions from the public. Uh, you're just asked to raise your hand and then the chair will acknowledge you, uh, which is myself. And I have no hands up. Oh, you have your hand up, councillor Maybe? Okay, I will acknowledge you. Please go ahead.
Thank you, madam mayor. And through you and for people in the gallery who may not have been here for the earlier meeting, it's basically a, a large section of agricultural land that's, uh, being severed off for a building lot. So it's, um, it is adequate and appropriate, as our planner had said during our pre-meeting, uh, to have this. And as councillor Fody even mentioned about it being all tiled and ready for the agricultural seasons in the future. So it's a very nice piece of property up on the, the hill. So, thank you.
Any further comments or questions? I see no further hands up, so I will call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? And it is carried. Next item is, uh, six point two Lou Jeffries Arena. And the motion comes forward from deputy mayor Fody and seconded by councillor Maybe, that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve option blank as described in administration report twenty twenty-four dash zero one one. So having the motion put on the floor allows us to discuss the, um, report that came forward along with all of the supporting documentation that you would have seen in our package. And we'll open the floor up to councillors, uh, for questions or comments. Nobody wants to go first? Uh, councillor Gerrell, go ahead and then councillor Maybe.
Thank you. And through, uh, you, your worship, uh, there are a myriad of points to be made, so I'm going to keep it, uh, brief. One, it would appear to me that we need a facility. Uh, we were instructed years ago that such things as arenas and, and winters, swimming pools rather includes, included are not something that townships our size want to get involved in. They're cost prohibitive. However, um, I think the surveys and so on, and my own personal judgment, you need, we need in this township, a facility. So then now morphing into the capital costs, because what has been brought up to this council numerous times is, why should we be contributing to capital costs when it's not our structure? Well, this is going to be some kind of a shared agreement. I think the public would expect that. They would be shocked personally if, if, if we were to leave, um, and to leave Gannon Aqui on their own. But my concern is, uh, I don't believe that we can simply come up with an annual number. So my suggestion might be, and not tonight, but, uh, we would maybe adjust this, uh, or defer the actual decision. But what I'm thinking is when I look at that capital, uh, building assessment, when you look at the ups and downs over the years, that's, uh, that's, uh, reserve fund, funding. And if we want to be consistent, perhaps in the real long run, we should be looking at shoving some money aside into a reserve fund. And on top of a month, pardon me, a yearly fee or whatever we want to call it, uh, agreement. Because if you look at the, um, capital and you look at the fluctuations, they're massive over the ten years, five years, whatever. They go from, you know, seven hundred, pardon me, they go from Over the ten years, five years, whatever, they go from, you know, seven hundred, pardon me, they go from seven thousand dollars to half a million. So how in God's name can you say, oh, we're going to give you X each year and make sense of that? It would have to be done each year at the budget level, which would be terrible planning. So what we should be thinking of is a yearly amount. Plus, we should be stuffing something into a reserve fund for the arena. That's my take on it. Thank you.
I'll recognize the CAO who wants to clarify some points.
Thank you, worship, and through you. Having looked at other cost-sharing agreements in our neighborhood, Rito Lakes, Smith Falls. There is, the approach seems to be, there is pick a number. And a percentage of whatever that number is, is earmarked specifically for capital. Sort of what we've been doing with Ganonakwe, with our annual RCAs. What option one proposes is that we pick a number. And whether we want to specify a certain amount as capital or not, we certainly can do that. But it's an interesting aspect that you raise about, you know, us having a little reserve fund set aside as well. I think I also envisioned with this that seeing the ongoing capital requirements, we now have some visibility for, you know, till twenty sixty. As to what, what the foreseeable capital requirements are in twenty twenty-two dollars. So these numbers are going to, as the farther you get away, the more expensive they're going to be. But at least we can see what, through the, the, the building condition report that was done by Ganonakwe and pulling together this capital plan. We now have a vision of what that facility is going to require. And we can plan or help Ganonakwe with the planning of it and support grants, fundraising, all that sort of thing as well. Part of me in the report was looking at this almost from the perspective and discussing with senior staff. It's like, we're kind of contracting out our, our arena use to Ganonakwe. They own the asset and they'll manage it. They, it's how they want to do the capital or what needs to be done in particular years. That's really, you know, something that they should be deciding amongst themselves. We're just in it to contract out like we're paying another vendor almost. I think that's maybe an oversimplification of the relationship, but it's certainly one way of looking at.
Do you want me to go to the other questions councillor Eller? Or did you? Okay. I have councillor Maybe. Is there anyone else who wants to go on the list? Councillor Kelman? Okay, go ahead councillor Maybe.
Thank you, Madam Ma, thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you. Again, a couple of reports here. I still support the arena full, fully. The biggest reason is that we can't do it for that cost anyways. My other question is, if we dropped out of this whole thing, what would the surcharge be to our users from our township? Are they going to be absorbent enough that it's going to cover the cost of that money that we're already paying or not? And I doubt if it's going to be because we'd lose all the users from the T L T I to the Ganonakwe arena if they had to pay for that deficit. So that's not going to happen. But I am fully with another year extension. And as long as there's a committee that is planning on a long-term and new concept for wreck building or by the committee, and that it does forecast that future for both municipalities together. And to councillor Gurrell's point, perhaps that reserve fund is another good avenue to look further in the future, to get us down the road and ensure that we have an ice pad that is capable of helping our community. And another thing, as I was driving home today, that I came up with was, over the last twenty-plus years, the amount of users to the actual facility has gone down, mainly because of the industrial that has been lost in the area, particularly in Ganonakwe. And there was men's leagues and women used it. There were lots of things used, because the arena, not only for ice hockey, but the skating club, ball hockey, whatever else. But the floor of the arena has also been used for garden centers, for certain shows. I know that the curling club had curling competitions here and the ice rink was changed into curling rinks in August, which drew a large number. The Kinsmen many years ago had a large bash there, an area conference. And there were, I think, a thousand people in there. We've also had, or there's been dances there that have supported the community in many ways. And even to that point, the group, and the name's Escape Me Coachman, actually raised funds for the Zamboni that has been replaced many times. So there's been a lot of community support. And with the industries going, yes, there's been a reduction in how many users are there. It still doesn't diminish that the building is still there. We still need it and it still needs to be maintained for the people who are still in our communities, whether it be Ganonakwe or T L T I. So I fully support us continuing on helping to fund this and make it part of our communities. But I do want to see some sort of long-term and new concept. Again, Prescott just had a brand-new facility built, which is a multi-function. So do we look at a concept of that, you know, and possibly make arrangements to make that happen? Thank you.
Councillor Kelman, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. The staff report raised a couple of significant issues for me. One was the emphasis placed on the survey. I thought that the survey was really flawed, in terms of the way it was marketed and in terms of the wording of some of the questions. I think we shared the survey once on our township website. It wasn't really made clear what the intent of the survey was. I think it actually said, you know, if this interests you, fill out the survey. There was no meaning given for the survey from us. I think it was marketed a little different in Ganonakwe. So I, I know that the, the response was considered to be quite high, the number of responses received, but only thirty, thirty-eight percent of those were from our township, which is under three hundred responses. So I'm very wary of making a decision based on, again, such a small percentage of respondents from our township. That's almost a population of ten thousand. And just even some of the questions, one said, you know, it asks where you, where you reside. And then it said, before you lived, one question said, before you lived in Ganonakwe, did you use the arena? So that question doesn't make any sense for someone that doesn't live in Ganonakwe, and the next question tied into that. So that question also didn't make any sense. So I don't know if our staff had any input into the survey. And, but I just, I have, I have a really hard time putting any weight on the survey. And of course, there was a vested interest in people that do use the arena, completing the survey. I don't think that a lot of people in the township even knew that the survey was out there. Or if they did, they thought it was just for Ganonakwe residents. And they didn't realize that there was going to be a lot of import placed upon it by our township. So I'm, I'm wary of making a decision based on the results of the survey. And my other big concern ties back to, to what I've said before. I completely see the point of contracting out for facilities that we don't have in our township, especially a, a, a large expensive facility like that. But as I've said before, not everyone that plays hockey in this township plays in Ganonakwe. And so what is our relationship with the Athens Arena? What is our relationship with the Westport Arena? What is our relationship with Kingston and Brockville Arenas, where we also have players? I don't know what the percentages are that use those. I know certainly in War Two, the bulk of the hockey players and figure skaters are going to Athens and Westport. So that's sort of the main impetus behind my agreeing with councillor Lackey that we need a recreation working group. That's one of the things that I would like to focus on. But also, the hockey numbers are dwindling across the province. And we have a lot of kids that use a lot of facilities that we also don't have in this township that aren't arenas. Do we support theaters? Do we support swimming pools? Do we support arts programs outside that we aren't offering in our township? So I would like to see a lot more balanced consideration given to how we're spending our recreation dollars in the township. And right now, it seems to me it's being very disproportionately spent on this arena if we carry on with a cost-sharing agreement. So I completely understand that arena is, arena is very important to the community and the people that use it. But if, if we went and talked to every single person in this township and explained to them the situation, I really feel like you wouldn't get the buy-in for this kind of spending outside of the people that are using that arena now, or maybe going to watch their, their kids or their grandkids play there. So that's my big concern, is that this is not good spending on behalf of the township as a whole.
Other speakers to this? Go ahead, councillor Lackey.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. A lot of good conversation tonight. And the, the point of, of bringing this up, I think on my part, was just the fact that we do have some new faces. We've got some intelligent people in the room and, and outside of the room as well that have a lot to say. On the other hand, I've also, listen, I, I agree with councillor Maybe in, in declining youth or declining use. And it's not all about hockey. It's, it's about other things, just use in general. You know, the way I'm looking at it is, is a, is a, basically a per person, not a child, not an adult, just a per person use, whether it's hockey, whether it's figure skating, whether it's what goes on upstairs. And what happens, I mean, over the years, it's dwindled a lot. But even at, at what we have now, if we add a hundred and fifty more people and we take that hundred and fifty-eight-five or a hundred and sixty thousand, you're still paying in upwards of four hundred and sixty dollars per user out of the township. And I don't know any other place that we have, like for soccer, for, I'll even go as far as to say, we have the canoe club in Gan and the curling club, who at one time had the same argument. We have fifty percent users at the canoe club. We think you should pay half our expenses. Obviously, that didn't fly because we've never done it. So, you know, there's a whole lot of things out there that we could, you know, if we're going to do it here, then we should do it for everybody, for everybody. And one of the other points I had is we have pre and post-amalgamation. A lot of these agreements were pre-amalgamation. And you're right, Lansdowne Ganonakwe were very close. And we had a lot of supporters from Lansdowne who put funds, their own funds, into building that arena. And there's no doubt. And we have a great relationship with FIRE. We have a great relationship in a lot of ways. I don't want to lose this one. So I just want something that's clear, concise, and will repeat itself year after year without too much adjustments. Would, would be the goal. Some of the other notes I just have down here is, again, again, it goes back to, it's not our asset, but it, it certainly is important, that's for sure. And again, what, what avenues have been looked at by the town? If we don't participate, have they come up with any ideas as to what to do? And why don't we do them, whether we participate or not, to bring the cost down for both town and the township, would make sense to me. So I think it's important to have that working group, so everybody can have the same ideas and move forward with them. The other point I have is been mentioned, what are the arrangements we have in place with the other arenas? Not only that, but I'm, I'm looking here now. We have, the, the town has, the rink has users from pretty much anywhere within sixty, seventy miles of here. What, what agreements do we have, if any, with the users from Kingston? Does, does the town of Ganonakwe have a agreement with Kingston? Do they have an agreement with Sephronak? Do they have an agreement? I mean, it's, just seems very confusing to me that, well, you guys use it the most, so you're going to pay extra. But all these other people, we don't have agreements with them. So these are just the questions that I had, and I'm glad we're moving forward with trying to solve them. I would go with probably option one, and I like Brock's comment about the reserve as well.
So option one or option one A with the board of management with the working group? One A, okay, okay. So one A, and I'm assuming one A. I, I'm not done taking, so one A is the status quo with the board of management and working group, which is coming up with the amount. Do I, how do I have the wrong one? Oh, my apologies. Sorry. This one? There we go. My apologies, I had the wrong report up.
I like the one A better, though.
So options one, two, and three. So one is to establish a set amount for financial contribution that is acceptable to council with an annual increase. An agreement could be set with Ganonakwe in a four-year term, being midterm for next council, to which, at which point the contribution would be reviewed and proposed adjustment be subject to council's approval. Option two was continue a status quo, where each year Ganonakwe estimates the annual operating costs for the arena to be split equally, plus an additional contribution towards capital planning, except expenditures. And number three was to terminate the township's financial contribution. My apologies for having the wrong report up. So option one, option one, and then, but yet you were, to be clear councillor Lackey, you were looking more in regards to councillor Gurrell's suggestion about the capital expenditures and adding that on at the same time.
Well, no, I'm just saying if we're going to do our own, yes.
Okay, so one, one. And so I have councillor Jameson, who hasn't spoken yet, and then deputy mayor Fodi.
Just start by saying that I would like to see some way to cooperate. But I, context is less clear to me now than it was before I read the report. Which was a good report, so it's, it's not a reflection on the report from the CAO at all. But it begs more questions. So going in position is I'd like to find a way to cooperate. But it is a building and it's an old building. And I think there needs to be a larger vision. And it's been mentioned by all the speakers that what, what's happened in the past is, is, it's gone. And where are we going? And this is a building that, that they're trying to keep from falling down. But, but things like, you know, do the user fees reflect going market rates across the region? Is the community prepared to step up? And, and when I say community, I don't mean the town or the township. Talking about people that have a particular interest in that particular location, are they prepared to step up? And we see that in other localities. I've heard one tonight mentioned by councillor Kelman that there are friends of an arena in another location in another town I visit quite regularly. It's a theater situation, but there is a large volunteer group that is not only providing management services, but they're also generating money. The, the days of just municipality being completely involved in the social engineering, we just don't have the money to be involved in, in, in this kind of thing. Because the demands upon us to fix the roads are required of, of us under the act. The planning act requires us to act certainly. We have to pay the bill for the police, because we have to. We have to pay the bill for the conservation authority, because we have to. This is the discretionary part that everybody takes a lot of interest in. But we are government, we represent a government, and government is not community. Government is a corporate entity that's here under a, for a specific purpose. So I'd like to find a way to cooperate, but I need more information. And I, I'm listening to particularly, well, all, all members of council. But I, I like what I heard from councillor I I like what I heard from Counselor Grail in particular that we have, we don't have enough information to really make a decision. And the issue of some of the capital expenditures without a line line items to tell me what they're for, it's pretty astronomical considering the age and the size of the building. We also have a situation where they put in this this other artificial rink, and it's quite fabulous, Canada one fifty rink, but I understand it shares the same guts to generate the the ice. So, you know, it's it's not clear to me that that we can move forward without we have enough information to certainly satisfy our residents, the broader group. So I would like to see us consider deferring until we see a a much better plan or sorry, we're not seeing a plan, a plan that isn't just picking an odd option sort of against something that's like bagging smoke. We're not, there's no clarity here. So let's find a way to support this, but let's have a real plan from the from the town about how they're going to manage a line by line over the next several years. And perhaps it's the opportunity inside the context of our own recreation initiative to have a a global approach, which other councils have mentioned, to everything else we're doing. It's just one sliver, but it's a huge amount of money relative to what we're not spending anywhere else. So what is our plan for our township? What is Ganonacway's plan for that arena? How does it fit into our plan? And what is it that we think our residents are actually prepared to support in a discretionary item? And I just one last comment, about ninety five percent of our budget, by my calculation, and I'm sure I can be corrected, is required of us to spend with respect to all the acts and all the things that were required to spend. So it's about five percent of our budget when you throw, and I include the library in that, which I consider essential, but it is not required of us. Neither is recreation. So it's about five percent of a fifteen million dollar budget, which is not a lot of money. So when we do invest in discretionary opportunities, we should be very clear among ourselves that we can make the case for support in our community. So my point of view is let's find a way to cooperate. But let's defer this until we have a real plan in front of us that starts to make sense with all the pieces together. Thank you, Worship.
So I'm gonna let Deputy Mayor Fody speak and then I would like to hear your questions and then the the C A O can can provide any sort of clarity, but I actually see where I think we can, we've found some common ground, which might be good to move forward for the C A O and and the other staff. So go ahead.
Thank you, Worship, through you. First off, I'll support the Ganonacway Arena. I always have, I always will. I see some of the comments made tonight that that I would argue, we are elected representatives, but we're elected by the people to represent the people. And for that matter, this arena falls into that. I've heard the argument before that other arenas in the area, this is the only arena that's surrounded by the town of Ganonacway, surrounded by the township, I should say, excuse me. It's the closest one. The other argument is the other arenas is a population base. We're heavily based down here in Township D L T I and Ward One. That's why when it comes election time, there's three members of council are elected from this ward because of the population. Two in Ward Two, one in Ward Three. Then the Kingston aspect was brought up tonight, and I think that's where this working group, and that's the the angle I support here as well. All glad they throw my name in there to volunteer to be on that group. I'd be glad to. I think this working group needs to reach out to places like the city of Kingston. They're a golf ball's distance from Vicky Leaky's former house. Softball actually could have hit it. But the city of Kingston is right there, and they're growing. They're not growing anymore toward Lake Ontario than we are growing north, straight up, I should say. So therefore, we need to reach out to Kingston and see if there's any value to them to jump in with us and put an arena somewhere in the proximity. If we, a sports complex, I should mention, the Counselor Grail's comments, it seems like a pipe dream, but when you look at the numbers to sustain, and everybody's taking a shot at that, and and rightfully so, the next four years, the numbers add up to seven hundred and seven thousand dollars to keep the arena as is. That's barring nothing surprising happening. So when those numbers play out to two thousand and sixty, they're astronomical. And this is where a working group, I think, could really come together from both sides and and create something. And maybe, maybe there's gonna be some grant money come down from the provinces, a little from the feds. Maybe we could go to that sports complex that Counselor Maybe mentioned. I've been to that. I went to Steve Clark's Christmas get together, and it was held in the Atlanta Chartran Arena, the new arena in Prescott. I went specifically to see what that arena looked like. Impressive. Can we afford it? Absolutely not. But this is what a working group needs to do. You need to think outside the box, look forward a lot further than what I'm gonna be around for, and make something happen. I think everything else has been covered, that that there's no need to be reiterate that, but I do support a working group philosophy. Thank you.
So Mr. C A O, you're good?
Thank you, Worship, through you. Yes, I I'm I'm taking in all the comments and the report, I I could have easily turned this report into a book with all the information and all the studies that have been done, particularly on the building. The the capital requirements, Counselor Jameson, that you see as Exhibit B on the to the report, those are related to the ice path, like the the arena proper, not the Canada one fifty outdoor rink. So things have been tailored to what our interests are as far as costs go in the report. We we've started when we've, I mentioned in the report that we formed the Lou Jeffries Arena Working Group with our counterparts at Ganonacway. And I have to say, it's been a really good forum for exchanging pretty frank and full discussions. And I've learned more from those meetings about the arena than I have from anything else. And so I I think having that forum still available to us going forward will be a huge asset for making sure that there aren't any surprises or gotchas or anything. But one of the things, and I did mention in the report, was the the working group held a meeting with arena users to discuss ideas, what are the strengths, weaknesses, and they're summarized in. I include a summary that was kindly provided by Jeff Johnson, the manager of Parks, Recreation and Facilities at Ganonacway, who's joining us along with Deputy Mayor Leaky tonight. And the the takeaway that I had, and I think Deputy Mayor Fody, you were there, and Counselor Lackey was there as well as Mayor and Counselor Maybe as well. There was, it 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 said to me, and maybe I was just wishing it. The people there were really engaged in the building and wanting to to they they had lots of ideas of how we go forward. They were engaged. So, you know, getting community support and getting community to the the community involvement in fundraising that I don't think that's gonna be a a hard ask for the for the groups. And these were primarily ICE users, but and I think
Probus was there as well and some of the the exercise group.
So there is a real sense of ownership and a real sense of of propriety, and let's take care of the arena. That's the what I got from the user groups for sure. Having this discussion at council is very helpful because it's it's nice to see what you're thinking, where your thinking's at, and where your questions are, and how we can go forward with it. But I'm paying very keen interest to what's going on here, so.
I have Counselor Lackey that wants to get it get back in, and then I have some comments to make, and I'll go to the the gallery if there's anybody that would like to add anything more to the discussion. Go ahead.
Thank you, Worship, and through you. I believe it was mentioned by my fellow counselor to my left. The report itself, I found, was was very vague and missing all kinds of information that's that's out there. But I think one of the misconceptions is that, especially in having coached and having been having been at the arena, is that people write a check to wherever, to minor hockey, to figure skating, to whatever, and that's, they say, okay, my child is enrolled or my adult is enrolled. And we only see that amount. What they don't see is what we're what else we're providing. So if you take and add those two together, what the resident pays for his fee, plus what we contribute, you do the math. That's a lot of money, a lot more than people realize, and this report didn't show that. And it was a good report, by the way, but it it does not show what people don't know. The plain, simple truth is how much are you really paying at the end of the day? As a taxpayer, as a user, as whatever, nobody knows that.
Okay.
We need to clarify.
Okay. So I'm going to make a few comments, and then, like I said, I'm gonna go to the gallery. So I too have really enjoyed the working group along with the town of Ganonacway, because I do believe, and unfortunately, not all of council can be at those committees, because then we'd have quorum, and then we could be making decisions. So the whole purpose is that we are working with staff and myself and the mayor from Ganonacway to further clarify. I know that our Director of Operations has worked very closely with Jeff from the director, the director from the manager from Ganonacway in regards to parks and facilities, to really understand the plan. And everyone around this table, as well as the town of Ganonacway, can appreciate that the asset management requirement now of the of the province is really made everybody sort of really have wide eyes now, because we know what we're staring down. However, based on what I've heard here here tonight around this table is that the the ending of the agreement is off the table. Nobody around here has said this is what we need to do. However, the main things that I have, main things that I have heard here tonight is we'd like to see what other municipalities have for agreements, just for comparison purposes. So if we're allowed to publish the Rita Lakes Agreement, for example, can we see that as an example? I believe they're public documents. I believe.
Yes, there are three. Two of the Rita Lakes Agreements are, I think it's Athens and and Westport, and it's a fixed sum with a cost of in a cost of living increase each year. So they they know that they're paying X dollars over the life of the agreement. The third Rita Lakes Agreement is with Smiths Falls and there's, I think there's four other municipalities involved with that agreement as well. And and here's where it gets complicated. They used a consultant to develop a model. It's called a geographical assessed weight, a weighted geographical something. Anyway, it has to do with their assessments, property assessments and census data. And you basically need a PhD in statistics to kind of figure out what how they how they come up with what their share. But they build in some checks so that in in no year will there be more than a five percent increase, and there's a set amount for capital and all that. It gets really, really complicated. Looking at our arrangement with Ganonacway, I thought I I I think we want to stay away from that. We didn't want to have to retain consultants every time. We wanted to figure out how much we had to pay. So the the fixed amount is seems to be kind of the easiest way to go forward. It gives you certainty, whether you build in a a cost of living or a set, where, you know, we're gonna just factor in a three percent increase every year, or whatever, you pick a number. So that's kind of where I went when in developing that option one. And then you build in other things of whether you want to have the working group sitting over as part of this option, working with GAN to to facilitate planning and all that stuff. And, you know, there's no, we can build in, we can look at as a as a staff, we can go back and and see what's involved in creating a reserve fund that would be arena specific, if that's the direction council wants to take. But most of most of the things, the easiest way for, and and it's for management side of things, it's easy just to know each year we have to budget X number of dollars, and then next year we budget X number plus whatever, or not, just stay X, whatever it is, it's up to council to decide.
And I I think that's the main thing is that council has had a lot of questions about the agreement. However, the main concern is is that when when staff goes to put together the budget, it then creates a further conversation. And to Counselor Lackey's frustration is that we're talking about it too late. And that the whole purpose of having this discussion earlier is so that we can get the nuts and bolts figured out. And based on the conversation tonight, nobody's ready to make any decisions about it. There's a bit more information that needs to come forward, which is good. But I think the whole purpose is that we're not gonna agree on a dollar amount per se, but it's the structure by which the the staff comes up with whatever number it is that they can plug into the budget. So that's what I'm sort of getting. But Counselor Grail, you had your hand up if you want to add something?
I I I like what I hear. It's just that to me, it appears obvious that if we first of all, we want the arena. It was pointed out to us that for some reason, whatever reasons, Ganonacway on its own can't afford the arena. So that brings us into a partnership, whatever you want to call it. Having a fixed amount of money, regardless of it's tied to some P C P I or whatever, you couldn't put enough, we would never be happy with the amount when you start looking at the building assessment report, the capital requirement. So I agree, we have to have a number that councils, that budget people can put together. And yes, that number can be on any, and it's not even gonna be an average. It's just gonna be so much goes to capital, so much goes to operating. But what happens in those years when the assessment report here skyrockets? Are is is Ganonacway gonna come back to us? Are we gonna be saying, oh, gee, what do we do about that three hundred thousand dollars that we gotta come up with? You see that, so it's not a flaw, it's just that there has to be more thinking. Because the working group would then have the opportunity to deal with fees, look at other avenues of money. So let's not be, I don't want to be naive about it. Yes, I don't mind at all a yearly fee, but let's be honest, that is not gonna cover those, the number would never be big enough to cover those numbers I see in front of me. Thank you.
Director of Operations, would you be able to maybe speak to the conversations that you've had with Mr. Johnson and how they have began their planning and how they might plan on funding this, whether it be through taxation or grant opportunities or what have you? Or would you like to defer to Mr. Johnson?
I don't know that we've actually had the conversation about how the plan for funding of of the plan. But we certainly had discussions about when when we first sat down and looked at the B C As, it was all of the information on on both of the arenas, the indoor and the outdoor arena, as well as the 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 ice resurfacer. We we spent the time to to talk about, you know, the some of the the steps they've taken to preserve the existing asset and and cut down these costs, and they continue to to make big strides in in extending the life of the asset through preservation techniques rather than, you know, large capital investments. One of the big costs that that is shown in here is the the complete replacement of the the roof of the arena, which is steel. And and that doesn't make sense on a steel roof. You don't just replace it. They're they're looking at, you know, trying to find some preservation techniques to extend the life of that, doing some some maintenance of the the blocks, doing some maintenance of the exterior, the in interior columns of the building, all these types of things to to instead of, you know, replacement to to extend the life of those, because these are are longstanding items. You don't you don't replace blocks typically on a building. You don't replace steel roofs. Hopefully, don't have to replace columns, but they are exposed to to certain elements that you have to to maintain them. And that's where I think Jeff and his staff have done a great job of of making those steps moving forward to to reduce those costs. The cost of the structural columns, I think, was around the half million dollar mark at at some point. And and Jeff has has engaged a a painting group that actually will scale and repaint the columns for thirty thousand dollars, I think, was so some of these types of of steps that they're taking to try to to reduce this. that actually will scale and repaint the columns for $30,000, I think was. So some of these types of, of steps that they're taking to try to, to reduce this. You know, we've had conversations about funding opportunities, whether it be OTF or, or federal grants that they can apply for. And, and there is an appetite for that, obviously, to, to continue to try for those. You know, our conversation about Grant Match as an example, I believe that Ganonakway has now engaged Grant Match themselves. This will start searching for these grants and try to, you know, offset some of these costs that will be coming down the pipe over time. So they've, they've been making these, these strides moving forward with the building that I think, you know, similar to ourselves may have been missing previously. And, and moving forward, you know, based on asset management requirement and all those types of things. So that's what I can speak to.
Okay. Um, I'll go back and then I'm going to go to the gallery. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, worship. Just one more. Um, I'll be brief. Um, just in the grants process, um, and the company that we're, we're mutually using. I, I, I mentioned this funding from the government because back in, uh, 2009, there was a grant given to the town for $325,000. It was actually quote a RINC grant, R I N C, um, that we did not know about even with a joint arena working group. So I know there's been one since then as well. So when we do this, everyone needs to be honest upfront. And what are we doing? Because I think there's a member of the prior council that was also involved with this particular instance. And it was, it was quite a shock to, it was like we, we don't, didn't know where the money went to, what it was spent on.
And I think.
So I want to make sure that all that is captured. Because it was not good.
Well, one of the things that we noticed when we first started with the working group was the fact that the amount that was being asked from the township towards capital improvement was a very small amount of the actual improvement that was being done by the town of Ganonakway. And to your point, Council Lackey, it wasn't that the, that the building wasn't being maintained. It's just, it wasn't, they weren't disclosing that to us because it wasn't part of what we were funding. So it wasn't necessarily a purposeful misleading of anything. It's just, well, this is what your 45,000, for example, I think it was 45,000 our last year. This, these are the items that, that will go to fund. But that the rest of the improvements, there was many other improvements that were being done in that building that were being fully funded by the town of Ganonakway. So they were maintaining the building, not to our taxpayers' expense. So the working group sort of cleared that up, if you will, and brought that to our attention. But to your point, Council Lackey, it would be nice to know that the building that we're contributing to help operate is being taken care of on the grander scale, not just the 45,000 that we're, we're contributing at the time. So I'm going to go to the gallery at this point so that I don't, and I apologize, I have the sun in my eyes. Um, I have one person's hand up in the back. If you'd like to come to the microphone and please, um, state your name.
My name is Ron Castleman. I'm the president of the Provis Club. And I'm looking at the age group. How many people here in the room are under 60? And, you know, and compare that, that is the age group. We're talking about hockey? We don't have many people in Provis that play hockey. So let's consider our social life. You guys who are retired, this is your Provis Club. You come to meet, you talk once a month, you have stimulus. But if you don't have this, what do you do with your life? Now, I live on my own. And you know, that house, the silence can get awful loud when I can scream at the top of my lungs and nobody hears. Provis provides an outlet. Now, how is Provis run? Volunteers. We don't ask for money. We collect money, but we try to keep that low because we have 200 members. And not every senior there is wealthy. So we cannot afford, if you lose, if we lose the arena and the town says you're going to have to pay for it, there's going to be an awful lot of seniors who can't afford it. And we have 200 seniors which would fill up this room. All belong in the Provis. And some of them are shut-ins. Now, consider the the social aspect. You have a group of people, 200, who would be alone. What about the suicide rate if they're, if they're alone all the time? You know, we provide content for them to socialize. Everybody here talks about geography. How many seniors, how many of you guys in the winter would be willing to drive to Kingston? For whatever reason, it's snowing outside, it's roads icy, it's dangerous. Well, the population, the 200 population that we serve, that's a major concern for them. So you really have to get off the hockey. Because the Provis is much more important from a psychological and a social aspect. That's mortal life. Now you may curl, but that's a social outlet. Now, I'm pushing 80. And heaven only knows when I'll be losing my car. And I live in the country. Well, all of a sudden, I've got to figure out how, how am I going to get my food? So I suggest that you either build a, a, a building that has a size room so we can have Provis. And by the way, there was a threat, as you recall, last year, about the possibility of us losing that once a month, Provis room. And we were scrambling around GAN, trying to find a place to go. We could not find any location. So if we lose that room in the arena, 200 people will have no place to go and it'll affect their lives dramatically. So give that a thought because we did search. We thought we were going to lose that room. And we were going to have to dismantle a $200 social club for seniors. That's it. A 200 member social club for seniors. So, uh, so, and we don't ask anybody for any money. We've never asked you for a dime. We just want a place. Now, this would be nice. I don't think you'd get them to come out here, but if we move all the furniture out of here, we could probably get Provis in here once a month.
Well, we do have another community hall and just down the hall, but nonetheless, your point about driving is well taken.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I had, I'll recognize Mr. Garra here. I did have the pleasure of attending one of the Provis meetings recently. Uh, I had been asked for many times. Mr. Bickerton has been chasing me since I was elected. Uh, it seemed to always conflict with joint services at county. So we had an off month where I was able to attend and pleasantly surprised when it was asked how many people were from the township and how many people were from the town. And it was at least half of the room. And I believe there was 130 in attendance that day. And I actually met, met three people from Sealy's Bay who come in for the, for the meeting. So it was interesting to meet those people and, and understand better. Yes, it's a social club, but there was, you could sign up for so many different activities. I'm not sure there was anybody who had a social calendar who didn't have one night that wasn't booked. So it was, it was a great eye opener for me. And I thank those who work hard to include those existing in the community who've grown up here, but also the, well, the newcomers. And also keep in mind that that, I believe that membership is capped at 200 and that you have a waiting list. Is that correct? Okay, Mr. Garra, if you'd like to speak.
Be very brief. Really a pleasure to come to a meeting and hear people ask so many questions and make comments. I think that's, that's how you solve problems. And, and I think what it, especially after listening to the first speaker here talking about youth and crime and all that sort of thing. And I, and I think what we're talking about, the arena does relate to those kinds of things. But I think the important thing is that that the talking and the question seems to come back to a, looking at a partnership. That there's lots of ideas out there. There's lots of ideas as we go around the table and so on. People view the problem differently, of course, which is fine. But I hope you will not make a decision on the amount of money at this point, that you will really embrace the idea of working together with the township. You have some good ideas, some good solutions and so on. And I'm assuming the people in Ganonakway do as well. There was a time when we charged user fees in Ganonakway. There was a time when we were, we're not charging user fees to the township, but we were charging fees from Kingston because they weren't paying and so on. So there's all kinds of things that have happened over time. So I hope you will think that you have a bit of time before you make this decision. Uh, I don't think personally that, that time is of the essence, but a good decision is critical. And, and I think you, in concert with the people in Ganonakway and staff and so on, I think in a relatively short time, thinking in terms of not only, I hate to use the word bean counting or whatever and whatnot, but also I hope you'll spend some time on value of what this, this place gives to our communities. It just happens to be in Ganonakway, but it is your recreation center. You raised money when Lou Jeffries, who was behind this process, he had his hand out for everybody. He didn't care where you lived. He was bothering everybody at the time. So you've paid your share in the past and I hope you will continue to get involved and see and think about the value. And that we can prevent a lot of things happening down the road for the little people. If we can get them involved in recreation and mixing the cultures in Ganonakway, by cultures, I mean, people who have lots of money, people have a little bit of money and people who have absolutely no money. We want them all to be involved. It's important. Because you don't want young people on the outside looking in. You want them to be included. And you people have the ability to include everybody if you work hard at it. Thank you very much. Enjoyed the meeting.
Thank you.
Just, I don't know whether I should comment about something that happened in 2009. Uh, I took a trip to Florida and had a great time on that.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Leaky, if you'd like to come to the podium.
No, no Deputy Mayor, this is just somebody that lived 47 years in the township. Two and a half years, jumped into the town. 22, thought, huh, I'll put my name in. Here I am. There's no borders around us. Township, town. The mayor said it, the township hugs the town again in Oakway. You certainly do. I think having a plan, I totally agree. And it's not just numbers. How can we both, because there's a bunch of smart people. How do we both come to, together with ideas to make this more than what it is? Cheaper for all of us. If we can bring other revenue in, if we can bring in more users, more user fees, less revenue required from either township or town, we can do this. They're smart people. And so, thank you so much. I appreciate the thoughts and, and your CAO. Thank you, Steve. Report was excellent. Lived here forever. This is where I'm not going anywhere. So thank you and I'm positive there's good things to come.
Thank you. I have one other hand up. Please come forward.
Thank you. My name's Barbara Pinkman and I'm a resident of the township. I've been for the past eight years and I love living here. And I'd like to really thank you for putting that survey out. But I would like to say, don't discount it. I think it was a good survey. And I know from experience, having been in the corporate world my entire working life, that the only people who respond to surveys are people who have an interest in it. You could literally hand deliver a survey to everybody and you still may only get 20, 25% returned. So put some value on that survey because it was a worthwhile survey. It gave people like us an opportunity to let you know how we feel. And my thoughts, when I look, as I say, I've only been here for eight years. I look at where Ganonakway is and we are surrounded by the township. You're a lot bigger than we are as, as a town of Ganonakway. The township is enormous. You have the larger population. But your population is growing closest to Ganonakway. And one of the reasons for that is that if you look at any of the real estate ads for a property, whether it's an existing home or a plot of land in the township, they promote their proximity to the town of Ganonakway and everything that it offers. And it offers all of those things because of the population density. Now, Ganonakway doesn't have an opportunity to expand. They have a very small boundary. You have limitless opportunities and you are growing and you are growing close to Ganonakway. I witness it when I'm out on my bike or driving around. And you will continue to grow because you have a beautiful, beautiful area. People want to live in places like this. But they also want to live somewhere where there are facilities. They want to live where they've got theaters, which Ganonakway offers you. They want to live where there are some stores that they can use, like a shopper's drug mart, a Canadian Tire. Where there are dentists and, and those sort of, and banks. I mean, the township is losing banks. We, the, the town has banks and you need both of those things. The town needs the township. And the township needs the town. So again, just thank you for sending out that survey. If you decide to send out another one, if people feel, if some of your councillors feel it's necessary, by all means do so. But it'd be very interesting to see. I don't think you'll get a bigger response. And it was very interesting, the response that you did get was overwhelmingly in support of continuing to support the arena. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I think that concludes this particular item. I know the motion still remains on the floor, but based on the conversation that we've had, I think, uh, Council Jameson had a wish to defer for further information and further discussion.
I believe we should defer. I think the issue of moving ahead with some cooperation, we have got to get back to the reality is we're talking about an old building that requires hundreds of thousands of dollars. We're not talking about programs. I mean, the, the case for support, let's, let's give Provis a grant. Uh, let's give the youth services a grant. Let's support the actual use. But we need more information to deal with an old decrepit building that needs hundreds of thousands of dollars of work. That's where I just don't see the way forward at this point. Because for example, option one, that's a fixed amount. It's a fixed amount against what? We're going to be having the conversation all over again. Because it'll be a fixed amount plus a certain percentage a year. We'll be right back into, well, how much is the fixed amount that is actually viable for the town to take? So, so far in all the discussions and all the, some of the nonsense online, I haven't heard any particular group of people say, let's step up and take charge of this arena within the community. Let's find a way to fundraise for this arena in the community. Everybody would like to use it. Who pays for it? If it is just going to be the municipalities, we're going to be on a downward spiral for years. So I think we need more information about how we can support this before we move forward. That's why I would like to see a deferral. Thank you.
Do I have a second or for the deferral? Counsel Lackey. Okay. Okay, so discussion on the deferral? Is it in regards to the deferral? Counsel, Deputy Mayor Foney, sorry.
Thank you, worship. You're looking for a discussion on the deferral?
On the deferral.
I vote against a deferral. All it does is kick the football a little further down the road. We're here tonight. We've heard a lot of good comments for and against and by the public. We, we need to get moving on this. So I would not vote for it. It gains us nothing.
So I guess for clarity purposes, that the motion to defer would be to have it come back at July to have further information about what it might look like financially. Is that what you're looking for, Council Jameson?
It, there seems to be an idea around option one. So that's the context I'm working with. That's a, uh, that's where the, the bagging smoke comes in. It, it's just not possible to know, have a feeling about how, what kind of money it's going to be against what is going to happen with that building. We see a chart with a lot of numbers, but it doesn't tell us the We see a chart with a lot of numbers, but it doesn't tell us the story. What is it that we're committing to tonight? That allows us to manage the, the money of this township uh, in a way that, you know, we talked about fixed amount with certain percent a year. We have no idea what that fixed amount is going to be because we say, okay, we'll give you forty-five thousand. That's not nearly enough for the town to keep that arena going. Uh, we're at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand now. In the, in two thousand twenty-three report, we had a declining balance where, which was ultimately defeated, but it, I thought that was a good idea. Here, here's so much this year and last year, each year for three or four years in order to get everybody moving on what they really needed to do with that building. There was no incentive to get things organized around a larger vision, which the Deputy Mayor from Ganonakwe is suggesting that there should be a larger vision and I agree with that. So if we're going to just talk about this building, I want to know more about what this is going to cost and what that number is going to be before I think we commit to a path.
Okay. Uh, I'll have the C A O respond to that. Just, I'm assuming you're looking for clarification for what you want the deferral to come back with, with additional information.
Um, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused of what a deferral will get and what information will be required, but what I think I envisioned would be if we proceed with option one, then uh, township staff would begin the discussion process with Ganonakwe staff on what they foresee as far as operating costs going forward. Uh, Dave and Jeff have been already discussing capital projects and the order of capital projects and the, the costs associated with them. So we have an idea of where that's going. And when we come back at budget, we would have a number that we would propose to council that would say, here's the number that we've talked through GAN. It's not like we're going to blindside them and say, guess what? This year councils agreed to eighty thousand dollars and that's what you're going to get for a four-year term. Cause that's what I'd like to see is a, an agreement so that we don't have Groundhog Day every year about what's the number this year. Um, we have a four-year term that coincides with midterm of the next council. So we pick a number, allow some growth in there for it um, that everybody can live with and that GAN can, can go back and say, okay, we're, we're not happy, but we're not put out and we think we can keep the, the arena going. It's a, it's a balancing act. Um, what I was hoping to get tonight was some sort of guidance on, on where council wants to go. I didn't want to get into trying to develop a business plan with Ganonakwe for the next five years because I didn't know where council was going to land on this. Whether we wanted to pull out or do something else or, or what have you. And I think just seeing the way the conversation has played out, um, I think there's some really good things that we can pursue out of this with our counterparts from Ganonakwe. So, uh, uh, you know, I'm a creature of counsel as well. You, you tell me what you want me to do and I will do it. But I need to understand what it is exactly that you're looking for.
I'm going to go to Counselor Gurrell, who had his hand up and then Counselor Lackey, but I do want to get some clear direction so that we can move on with the agenda.
Uh, we're discussing the motion.
To defer and what information is required to come back.
My opinion is that option one allows us lots of wiggle room, lots of further discussion. All we're doing is directing staff to consider the numbers that we'd like to deal with for a period of time, which we can determine in the next short while, but it would give, it would give some assurance to this town that we're on board. Uh, I don't see that the deferral, or pardon me, I do not see that anything in number one prevents uh, the concerns of the deferral being addressed in, in, in the very near future. It doesn't have to be a long, long time away, but we need to get for budgetary purposes and so on. And I think the um, will of this council is to do support. So I don't think the deferral adds anything. I think I would, I would defeat the deferral. Thank you.
So, so the, the point of the deferral, I'll go back to Counselor Jameson for the point of the deferral and then we'll, I'll go to Counselor Lackey then. Go ahead, Counselor Jameson.
Hey, um, Counselor Gurrell, I agree with you. Um, the wiggle room is there up to and including saying no. Um, which should always be an option in any agreement. No. So on that basis, I, I, I hear that. Um, my concern is, is it's just a lack of clarity and, and it's, it's not casting any aspersions upon the report. The C A O's effort, it's just not clear. So, but I take your point and I, you know, I, I made the motion. It hasn't been second. I, I'd vote against my own motion.
So you can motion, you can withdraw your motion?
I can withdraw it with the permission of the second.
Sorry, we need to, my apologies. I, so if we're, if we're rounding the corner here and going back to approving the original motion, option one, then we would have to defeat the deferral. So, is there any?
Are we, are we sure we're not just going to head now have a discussion about option one, two, thirty-eight?
Well, based on the census around the table, it's option one that is the most. So, so the motion to defer is on the table. Counselor Lackey, do you have any further comment?
No, just for clarification, uh, are we expected to uh, just squared out a number?
No, I, I think this is for them to come up with a number that would be further considered and that it would be coming forward with a four-year agreement based on how, how it's been presented with a, but a formula, like the specifics haven't been worked out to the point.
Looking for an answer tonight, then somebody's going to have to spill the number.
No, the option one is establish a set amount. This, this is to establish a set amount because we would not approve that set amount until budget time. So, so the set amount has not been established yet, but the indication from this council is that we come up with that number well before the budget process. So it can be discussed here at, at the, at the table. Go ahead, Counselor Kellman.
I, I would just add, I think if we go with option one, I really would like to have feedback from our new recreation working group in terms of looking at our recreation spending in a much broader context. And I think that if this is going to be part of our budget consideration, then that gives us the time to get that feedback. So I would be comfortable with option one.
Okay. So we're going to go back to the deferral, which is on the tables, which we have to deal with. So all those in favor of the motion to defer, please signify. All those in favor of no motion to defer. Okay. So that is defeated. Sorry. You lose again. Yes, Counselor Jameson. So we're back to the original motions uh, put forward from Deputy Mayor Fode, seconded by Counselor Maybe, that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve option one as described in administration two thousand twenty-four dash zero one one. Any further comments on the motion at hand? Counselor Gurrell.
Yes. Uh, couldn't we just keep that real simple and strike everything after the first sentence? We don't really need, do we, to include uh, the particulars, just say, establish a set amount for financial contribution that is acceptable to council with an annual increase. Period. Why don't we just uh?
The motion has already been uh, put on the floor with option one. So if.
Well, then that's amendment to, uh, to option one is what I'm suggesting then.
Okay. Sorry, the clerk has something to say.
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, just for clarification, the motion reads that council, that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve option one as described in administration twenty twenty-four zero eleven. Um, I recommend that we do keep that resolution or that recommendation for clarity. Um, that's just what I.
So the, so what has to come forward to council is as option one is stated here. And then it could be amended at that point in time, could it not?
Through you, Madam Mayor. So for the, cause once council provides us with this direction, a report will come back from our C A O outlining those details of what that established fixed fee would could potentially be.
So your, so your ask, Counselor Gurrell, is to take out the, after the annual increase allowance?
Let me be clear. What I don't want to corral ourselves into something that I personally don't see may or may not be part of the agreement. Example, further down it says under option one, when it's discussing it, a very good discussion. There's no, in, in the, in number one there, there's no clause that says, oh, and by the way, the working group shall have input and so on. So I just want to avoid. I'm not against anything. I just want to avoid getting down a rabbit hole.
That they can't get back out of.
Yeah, simple. So keep it simple.
Is there enough wiggle room, Mr. C A O, based on how it's been presented to do what Counselor Gurrell is asking?
I think so. I understand what you're, what you're looking for.
I don't want it to.
I, 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 and I couched option one with, well, we could do this, we could do that, we could, you know, and we could have a starting date on January first and go for four years, but we could not. So that would be as the clerk advised. That could be something that once we get a little farther down the track, that we can come back to council with the, you know, here's, here's what we're thinking in terms of structure of the agreement. We could, we could, and we would also have any discussions with our recreation working group now, who wants to be involved in, in.
So that can be included.
Yeah. So we can include all of that stuff. Everything's on the table at this point.
There, nothing in what I'm reading would prevent any of that.
Preclude anything.
Fullsome discussion.
Correct.
I will not come back to council and say, no, no, you already agreed to it as part of this. I won't do that.
Okay. Okay. So I'm going to call the question on option one and that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve option one as described in administration report uh, twenty twenty-four dash zero one one. All those in favor of the report? Option one. And that is unanimous. So thank you, everyone who has come out to support. I realize it was a long discussion, but it was well worth it and, and it's been a long time coming. So thank you. We're going to take a brief recess for ten minutes. So, but the main purpose and the reason this is happening is because there's no board members left. So this isn't a, we're not looking to get into the business of here. So go ahead, Councilor.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. So I just wanted to go a little context because so St. Luke's was my church. So I've been involved it, with it for a long time, and I've been involved at the parish council level for twenty, twenty plus years. For most of that time, it was understood that St. Luke's and the parish of Leeds did not own that cemetery. Maybe at one time it did, but geographically it would make sense, but it did not. And then sometime, I would say within the last 10 years, we were told by the Diocese of Ontario, the Anglican Diocese of Ontario, that we did in fact own that cemetery. The parish did, the diocese did. And so we then had a member from the parish sitting on that cemetery board. And then this last year, the diocese decided that, no, we did not have anything to do with that cemetery. So we removed our member and the, and the board was starting to break down. And I do sit on synod council for the Diocese of Ontario. We were actually talking about this at our April meeting, and I will tell you that the diocese currently is trying to get out of owning cemeteries. And we weren't talking about this cemetery specifically. We were talking about one in Prince Edward County, but I asked, our municipal archives searched before we decide that we, as a diet, the diet, and I'm talking about the diocese, don't own that, don't have a deed for that. And they said that due diligence was done, but I don't, I would, I don't know if we have checked with our archives because the last I was told at our vestry meeting in March, there's actually two separate cemeteries on that site. There's at least two deeds, possibly more, for two separate now defunct churches. So I just want to make sure that we are not taking a response, taking responsibility as a municipality for a cemetery that maybe we don't need to be respons- maybe the diocese still has responsibility and we just need to do a little more research.
So I'm going to go to the clerk for that?
Yeah.
Um, through your worship, uh, great questions. Um, so I have been in touch with the, uh, former Lindhurst Cemetery Board Member. Uh, we did, she provided me with an overview of the complicated history of the cemetery. Um, I have been in touch with our lawyer. Um, and he has advised us that the current owner of the cemetery is by the trustees of the Methodist Church. Um, and the care and maintenance funds are with the Diocese of Ontario. Um, so again, the reason why we're bringing this report forward to council is to, um, with your approval, may, uh, continue with those necessary steps and work with our lawyer to obtain ownership. Um, and operate this cemetery moving forward.
Just follow up question. So if we do take it over, do we continue to administer it as an active cemetery? So the people that own plots can still use those plots and can they, can we sell new plots?
That's correct. So administration would, I would oversee administration, and then our Director Holiday would oversee the maintenance side of things.
Okay. Okay. Oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Fode, go ahead.
Like here, excuse me, thank you, Worship, through you, just an afterthought. When we take it over as a township, any cemetery, do we have the right to change the cost of burial plots?
Uh, through your worship, we do. Um, so at the June seventeen council meeting, I'll be bringing forward a cemetery bylaw as well as a amendment to our general rates and fees bylaw. Um, I will be proposing that we do keep the fee status quo for the remainder of twenty twenty four. And then in January twenty twenty five, propose a new set of fees for the cemetery moving forward.
Okay. The reason I mentioned that, I've sat on a cemetery board for a long time, and that has been the demise of most cemeteries. The fees have never kept pace with the reality of cost, and the inevitable happens. But, uh, I'm pleased to know that we as a municipality can set, uh, burial fees. Uh, what is happening and, and, um, there's hardly a cemetery around here that can't relate to it, or at least a board. We're being, uh, phoned regularly by large municipalities, namely the G T A. They see our costs down here, and they don't really care where their loved ones are buried if we can do them for eight hundred dollars. Because the G T A has, uh, fees as high as forty five hundred dollars for the same amount. But, uh, that, that's enough. I'm satisfied with that answer. Thank you.
Right. Counselor Jameson?
I just wanted to say I'm glad to hear that we're going to see, um, moving forward on the cemetery bylaw. I also appreciate that the grant program has been very helpful as well, that was introduced like two or three years ago now. So this is all good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for the clerk on this report? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? All those opposed? And we're carried. Six point four, Lindhurst Community Organization requests to join Partnership for Economic Enhancement and Revitalization Working Group. So the motion comes forward from Counselor Maybe, seconded by Deputy Mayor Fode, that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve the Lindhurst Community Organization to the, join the Partnership for Economic Enhancement and re- revitalization group work, working group, sorry, peer as attached to corporate services dash twenty twenty four dash zero one seven. Discussion on the motion. Pretty self-explanatory, I think. All those in favor of the motion at hand? All those opposed? And we're carried. Uh, next item is unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Go ahead, Counselor Jameson.
Any word on the Lindhurst Bridge safety?
I have, I'm going to, um, further send another email in regards to that. I did not bring it up as a motion. We have a bus tour coming up in June, um, for this side of the county. We were in Greenville last week. Um, I will make sure that it is on the county tour so that it can be discussed at that time. Okay. Uh, any other unfinished business? Okay, other business? I have no other business. Any notices of motion? No notices of motion. I'll go to mayor's update. Uh, June is Pride Month. Pride Month is dedicated to uplifting and celebrating diverse voices within the two S L L G B T Q I plus communities. We all have a right to belong, no matter what our gender or sexual identity. Council and staff are painting a pride walkway at the township office on June the fifth at ten thirty A M to show our commitment and solidarity to inclusivity, equality, and understanding. So, um, I will wish my colleagues, uh, all the best for that particular timeframe, not because I wouldn't love to attend, but I do have, um, I do have committee of the whole for county at that particular time. I'll be here potentially later in the day. Um, if not the following morning to see everybody's handiwork. So I apologize for not being able to pitch in that particular day. Uh, June is also seniors month. The theme for seniors month this year is working for seniors. It is time to recognize the hard work seniors have done all their lives to help make our township in Ontario the great place that they are today. So if you know a senior that has given lots to their community, please be sure to thank them for their contributions. Parks and Recreation Month is also celebrated in June. June is Recreation Parks Month, J R P M, and it's a movement that promotes the benefits of recreation and parks for physical, social, environmental health. This year's theme is Community Thrives Here. Um, it's a time to celebrate how parks and recreation brings together communities. Um, next is our annual touch truck event on May the twenty first was in support of Roll Aid Food Bank in Sealeys Bay, and the township raised seven hundred and fifty dollars and collected some food donations that will go to people in need of our community. Thank you to the local organizations, businesses, and staff for making this a successful event. Roll Aid Center Food Bank had their official opening on June the first. Myself, Counselor Jameson, and Counselor Kelman were able to attend, as well as a representative from Farm Credit Canada, F C C. Um, they had provided some funds for accessibility ramps and some doors and walls and some structural things as they also see the va- the valid need for, uh, food banks that contribute to supporting those who have no ability or limited ability to feed themselves. So it is sad we do need the facility and that the, um, uses definitely increased exponentially. However, uh, very grateful to those in the community who are dedicated uh, and the organizations who help fund it. Uh, it's not just individuals, but other organizations in the community that help support those in need, both from a food insecurity purpose, but also if they're, um, short, whether it be getting rides somewhere or short on the electric bill, that sort of thing. They also help point people in the right direction to find those funds. Red Canoe Fest was also held on June the first, and they had tripled their entries for this year compared to last year. Last year was pretty windy and a pretty crappy day, but this year was absolutely stunningly gorgeous. So, um, I believe, um, one of the Donaldson children was one of the winners, um, had three aces. So that's, uh, won the poker hand. Uh, and, um, so it's great to see people coming out and enjoying the, uh, Rita Canal up in Sealeys Bay, right? Um, please keep your eye out for our new Township Times publication for July, uh, to September, and it'll be in your mailbox by the end of the week. I also just want to take the opportunity to recognize, um, the passing of Charlie Donovan. I believe I had mentioned it at a previous, um, a previous meeting. However, I had the pleasure of attending uh, his celebration of life along with Counselor Maybe. Um, and it was really amazing to hear people talk about the stories of Mr. Donovan and what uh, he had done to support the community in many ways, whether it be individuals, uh, teaching them how to fix things themselves, um, rather than selling them brand new, um, pieces of equipment. He'd rather teach you how to do it and give you a forty cent washer. Um, but more, most importantly for our community is the generosity that he left behind with, uh, leaving Land's Bay to, um, to Parks Canada. It's one of the newest parks, um, that in Canada. And, uh, it is so much enjoyed by both locals and people coming from afar. To that point, in my other role in my life, I got to meet a young couple who just bought a home specifically on Cross Cemetery Road to be across from that particular park because they met while they worked at Parks Canada. They fell in love with the area. They weren't from here. And, uh, they walk every day extensively with their dog, and they specifically bought that property because of that particular trail, which I think is a pretty heartwarming, uh, story. And, uh, we welcomed them to our community, but thank you, Mr. Donovan, for the vision that you had to leave behind Land's Bay trails for generations to come. And that is all I have for announcements. Counselor, go ahead.
Uh, just announcement, uh, the Rockport, um, uh, Recreation Center is having Rockport Jam on June twenty second. It's an all-day event with multiple, uh, entertainers all day long, and it is the longest day of the year. I believe summer solstice.
And it is a fantastic event. They have lots of great acts that come in, very different, different types of music, so.
Yes, it is.
Go ahead, Counselor Maybe.
Uh, one thing that's happening actually tonight, it's a parade of planets. So if you get to see the night sky, you'll see all the planets in a straight line.
Perfect. Counselor Jameson?
Just to, um, add to the comments you made about the food bank, uh, a member of the board, but, uh, at that, uh, I am a member of the board, but at that, uh, that opening, um, the Chair of the Board, Don Stiles, did express, um, uh, how, how much, uh, the food bank appreciates, uh, the work of the staff, the township, uh, many members of staff, uh, also to make, to get into the building. And, and we appreciate the long-term lease that we have, and we really look forward to working with the township in the long term at that location. So thank you, T L T I.
Deputy Mayor Fode, go ahead.
Thank you, Worship, through you. Any loss of life is, is sad, but I want to mention two individual men who, uh, were influential in this area that, uh, recently passed away and celebrations of life and such. Clark Stacy was a, uh, successful businessman in the town of Ganonacui before he moved here. Literally across the road, Clark came to the Fairboard Board of Directors meeting years ago. Apparently I was on the board then, and it's the idea that if he put a, he was going to build this, uh, horse barn, and he would maintain the Lansdowne Fairboard's racetrack in lieu of being able to use it for training horses. That still carries on to this day. That track is second to none in any racetrack, I'll say, dare say in Ontario. And because of his vision, we still reap the benefits of that. And Clark, of course, went on to own Rapid Valley Restaurant, and some members of his family did as well after that. And Les Running passed away, uh, literally the same date. And Les was a longtime road superintendent, uh, here in the township for decades. And, uh, he in, he encompassed all the jobs that, that, uh, our Works Department has now, but with a different degree and a different counsel and, uh, a different, uh, mindset of operating roads back then in the sense that it was a much simpler time, I'll say. But I just wanted to acknowledge both those men and, uh, their long lives and their impact in this community.
Thank you very much. Counselor Grab?
I just, uh, I don't know if anyone has any, um, other issues. I just have, uh, a quick issue regarding procedural. We had a, a resolution, uh, put before us, uh, regarding Kehoe Marine, uh, company being put on a committee of the whole meeting next week. Is that a debatable, um, resolution? Does it need to be debated?
Madam Clerk, do you want to speak to that?
Through your worship, so that resolution is on the special council meeting agenda.
Correct.
Um, and we-
When we get to that-
When we get to that motion, we can, you can further discuss it.
It, we just have to go into the next meeting in order for you to discuss it.
Oh, is that coming up in the next? There you go.
Okay. Any further announcements? Seeing none, I'll call the question, or sorry, um, the motion comes forward from Counselor Jameson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Fode, that the committee of the whole adjourned. All those in favor? All those opposed? And we're carried. Okay. So that ends our committee of the whole.